Okay. All right, welcome to the City of Beaumont's City Council Workshop Session. We're calling the order at 6:05 PM. Today is Thursday, December 21st, 2019. Can I have a call to order?
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Lara.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Mayor Pretend Santos.
Here.
Mayor Martinez. Here. Mr. Parton, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Please join me in a pledge to honor our country. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which we stand in, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Okay, do we have any adjustments to the agenda or conflicts of interest to disclose? Okay, seeing none, do we have public comment today?
None.
Okay, so no public comment at 6:06 PM. Moves us to action items. Number one, the budget workshop. Initiation of the 2020-2021 budget building process. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple of quick comments for you, and then I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Mullenkamp, our brand-new finance director. So, the good news about having adopted the 1920 budget is that we get to start the 2021 budget. So, congratulations on getting us going. So, when we went through the budget process at our last meeting, or our last session or process, we looked at city council goals, we reaffirmed, we made some adjustments there. We did a few elements of strategic planning and strategic thinking. But if you really think about it, it really wasn't until we got to the last two years where we actually had a solid financial basis to begin working from. And so, we're really into what I would consider the second budget cycle heading into 2021, where we actually, I think, are coming from a better dataset moving forward. So, I greatly appreciate council taking your time to have done the survey work to get us prepped for this. That is a critical element that's going to help us to strategically think about what we need to do, where we need to prioritize our efforts, and also kind of discuss some of the functional, basic functional things that are happening in day-to-day operations. And looking to try to establish what those are, to look at adjustments we need to make to those, to look at any additional things that we may not be doing either completely or all the way like you want to see, or things that we're not doing at all that we need to contemplate adding are critical to us as we begin to build forward. We've been working hard to build budgets that are building us towards sustainability. And so, you know, this input, and I know from a lot of folks, we may be early in the budget process, but this is critical for us because we're going to take this information and then begin the process to try to bring forward a product that's going to really reflect where you want us to go. So, I'm really kind of excited about this year because, again, it's an opportunity to really kind of delve in and to really begin to have the community begin to really put their fingerprint and their blueprint on where we're headed. So, you know, not to diminish the budget work we've done in the past, because, you know, I think that's been good work, but it's been, again, about building and establishing the base. And now, we're trying to firm up that foundation a little bit and then move on. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Mullenkamp.
Thank you. For the record, Jeff Mullenkamp, Finance Director for the city, and this is my first time, other than when I was introduced to you, to be able to speak to you. So, appreciate the opportunity. So, today, we're going to take you through the first stage of the budget building process. And what that means is, we're not going to talk about many numbers tonight. So, that may make you happy. As a budget guy, I'm a little sad, but we're going to be talking a lot about operations. We're going to talk a lot about where the city is now. And we're going to talk about threats on the horizon, and we're going to talk a little bit about kind of what planning might look like to address some of those challenges and some of the opportunities that are ahead of us. So, I'm going to walk you through, we've got a PowerPoint, I'm going to walk you through that, I think that'll kind of set the table. Mayor, would you like me to get through my presentation and then stop, or do you want to stop along the way?
I think if the city council committee needed clarification, they'll ask. Are we in agreement with that?
Sure.
Okay. If there's a place where we need to stop, that's fine. I'll try and be brief and give you plenty of time to deliberate and talk. So, what we're going to do tonight is we're going to talk about the results of this survey. Survey was conducted by, all the city council members participated, and we had management, senior management for the city also participate. Same survey. Everybody's results are anonymous. I'm the only one that was compiling all the data. And what you have in front of you, one of the documents, and we'll get into that in a moment, one of the documents is a compilation of those answers. It's an average, if you will, of the council and average of management. And then, you'll see that we are going to get into some areas where either management, council, or in some cases, both identified where maybe some, a deeper look might be into some of the services or functions we do. So, we're going to talk about the current financial state of the city. We're not going to get into a lot of numbers there, because we're going to have time in future budget meetings to do that. And then, we're going to talk about those fiscal challenges. We're going to talk a little bit about capital needs and what we might be able to do to look at those. And then, lastly, I'm going to turn it over to the council and walk through a number of things that we, questions we have for you, some direction we need as we move forward in the budget building process. So, with that, we're going to start talking about the survey. But just briefly, I want to tell you how we did it. Everybody responded to me. There was a number of questions, but for the most part, people responded very timely, and we were able to get a really good response from both management and, again, all of the council. We summarized them initially by city department, because we wanted you to see those kind of compartmentalized by the group that performs the functions or provides the services. But in front of you today, there is a document, you see, it's a letter-sized document, it's all blue on the front page, and then it turns orange a little later, and then, but what we've done is we've captured all of those, but these are ranked instead of by department, they're by the ranking of criticality that they receive. So, the highest is first, all the way to the lowest at the end. I'm going to walk you through, so you don't have to digest all that tonight, you can take your time with it. I'm going to walk you through some of the highlights of what's contained in here. So, going to page four, we looked at 70 distinct different services or functions. And again, the difference between a service and a function is a service is where our, the city meets the public, if you will, where we provide a direct service. A good example of that would be patrol services performed by the police, running a park system, things like that. That's where we're directly. And then, a function is something we're doing more behind the scenes. It's the accounting work we do, it's the human resources work that's being performed in order for the city to function. So, in aggregate, 70 different services and functions, 16 of those were rated as highly critical. In a numeric sense, they get a rating of eight or above on an aggregate basis. 53 were rated as moderate, and only one came as what we call low criticality, and that's a ranking below five. Now, these, the way the table you have and the way we rank them is the council's results. You have the management's results as well, you can see they differ to some degree, but the council's results are what we use for that ranking setup. A couple of takeaways, at least the way I look at it, certainly, you can look at it a different way, but for the purposes that we were looking at it, if it's a highly critical service with a satisfactory performance rating, probably doesn't warrant a lot of time and energy on the part of the council. Clearly, you could look at those, but there's other areas where we, where you might focus your energy. However, if you have a highly critical service or function with an unsatisfactory performance rating, that's something that probably is worth a good look by the council, because it's something that's very important, but the respondents have indicated that it's not maybe being, you know, performed right where we want it to be. So, if it's a moderately critical service or function, we're kind of going the same thing, probably only really warrants looking at if, in fact, the council, management, or both have looked at it and said, hey, we think there's some problems with the way we're doing it. When I say problems, you'll get, we'll get into that in a minute. An unsatisfactory rating doesn't, is not a knock on staff, it's not a knock on the city's efforts and what we're trying to do. In many cases, it's either looking at maybe a different way of doing it, or maybe we don't have enough resources dedicated to it to do an effective job. So, we'll get into that in a little bit. Finally, if it's low criticality, we only have one that we identified, that's something I think the council might want to look at, certainly in a difficult financial situation, whether we want to keep doing that or whether we want to modify how we do it. You can do, you can do that with any of these, by the way. It's just when they're low criticality, it's probably something that jumps out a little bit more at you. So, moving to the next page, on page six of your PowerPoint, of the highly rated services, what we did is we identified on these next two pages, those services that were rated high by the council. Slightly different from management, but there was a lot of crossovers, you'll see when you look at the larger list. I'm not going to get into these too much, but I wanted you to have a chance to see kind of on a glimpse where the higher services are. For example, you have a couple of things in the police department with patrol and dispatch 911. Our wastewater, which it'd be really good to not have wastewater flowing in the streets. So, wastewater, obviously, is very high. Fire protection, and you can see there's a number of other areas, even some areas that are more functions, but they're really necessary for the city to function. If we don't have human resources, if we don't pay our staff, it won't be long before we can't provide services. So, these are the two pages that highlight your highly rated areas. Going to page eight, only one of the highly rated services also was rated as unsatisfactory or needing attention. And when I say unsatisfactory, it really, it really was that management, in this case, it happens to be that both management and council identified this as an area that warrants attention. And this is not because the fire teams aren't doing a good job, I want to be clear about that. Some respondents indicated that we really need another fire station, that we really need to be able to do more to cover the expanding growth of the city and the difficulty it is to get to all reaches of the city. And then, others thought that while it's a good service, it's very costly, and there's a need to look at the contract and see if we can't actually quite honestly get a better financial deal. So, those were the two primary reasons that this service ended up in what we call the unsatisfactory stage, because it warrants a deeper look. Now, there were some other areas that the council and management, in this case, looked as needing attention as well. Parks and recreation, right away, is one that jumps out. As a number of respondents indicated that this is an area that really hasn't received the level of attention it needs. A level, this is one where, quite honestly, some comments came back that we need to look at potentially outsourcing this, we need to look at a combination of how we do this service. So, right away is something that both management and council looked at and said, this is an area that probably warrants some focus. Economic development, business attraction and development was another area that was identified by the council and management as needing some additional focus. In this case, there were a number of comments that went to the point of that we need to look at how to target maybe more effectively, and also how to maybe attract the right type of businesses that we're looking for. In some cases, a couple of comments were saying that we don't have adequate resources in this area to fully do that type of work. Again, in economic development, real estate revitalizations and entrepreneurial development, there were some similar comments, lack of the ability of resources and the need to be very focused as to what type of work that we were trying to encourage in the city. We move to the next page, we have a couple more. This is on page 10 now. So, Public Works, this is one I wanted to highlight and spend a couple of minutes on, because both management and council identified this as an area needing attention. It's probably the area, when I looked at, that had the most concrete level of commentary on it. And again, it's not a knock on staff or what we're trying to accomplish, but in this case, it was, it was very clearly that we may not have the resources applied to this area to effectively manage our streets and maybe improve them. There were a number of comments that, that while we're, while we're doing okay, and I know a little while back, you had a pavement, a pavement index study, but we're, we're teetering on the edge of whether we're going to drop down or whether we're going to be able to maintain. And financial resources is probably the clear component there. And then, the last one that I wanted to provide as far as a takeaway, there's a few others in here, but the one I wanted to, the other one was fire protection. This is one that was a little off, it didn't have consolidation of everybody. But the concerns here, I think, were a little bit more trying to understand what it is they do. And it could have been the way the survey was approached, in fairness, because we have it within the building section, we also have fire safety there as well. And I think a few respondents were saying, well, who does it, and where does it stop, and where does it start? And it might have been a little bit of a challenge with the survey, or it may be that there's some challenge with the functionality of how we're doing it. So, this is one, I think, that maybe warrants some attention, or it may be that the survey was flawed. And so, I put it on here because of the results, but I think I would defer to the management team to be able to get back to you to say, is this a little more concrete and really doesn't warrant that much attention or not? So, I'm willing to pause here and talk about the surveys a little more, because I'm going to be moving into talking about the financial condition of the city shortly. So, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to, if there's any commentary there, or we can move forward and then take questions at the end.
Let me clarify for the public, so, do we have this PowerPoint uploaded?
It already is.
Oh, it already is on the PowerPoint.
It's the third hyperlink.
Okay, so, for those that are maybe watching, it's going to be a hyperlink, and thank you for calling out the papers that you follow on. Do we have discussion or questions from council? I just want to, on that fire service versus protection, so I can see maybe where the confusion was coming up twice on the first part versus the fire protection services, and then it's fire service and protection again, so we'll come back and talk about that. I don't actually want to start.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, I don't think your mic is on.
Wasn't loud enough with teacher voice, okay. All right. Any other further discussion or questions? If not, we'll continue.
So, we'll, we'll, we'll be able to come back to that, because I think one of the major thrusts of tonight's meeting is, is the effort to try and say, are there things we want to look at and address? And it may have direct impact on the budgetary process, you know, because if we want to do that, then it's really going to be important for, for the staff to be able to provide you the information you need to make good decisions. So, I'm going to, I'm going to move to page 11 then, and we're going to start talking a little bit about the financial condition of the city. Again, I don't have a ton of numbers. As you, as you know, in your, in your packet, in the staff report, we have Attachment A, so that's also a document you can have available as we start to talk about the numbers, a little more detail on the general fund there. So, that's a document you might want to have handy as we start to talk about the numbers. So, the, there's really positive news, and, you know, I want to take a moment, if I can, to, to appreciate the work that's gone on in the city, coming from the outside, looking in, and, and just being here now about six weeks, my sixth week, so I'm almost a veteran. I find it to be very impressive on what the team here has been able to accomplish. It was a very, very challenging situation that you had to go through, but I can tell you right now that the city's finances are in a stable position, and that's, that's due in, and no small part to the team here and the council's guidance and, and the city manager's leadership. So, I'm very appreciative of coming in on the heels of the difficulties. It's a lot of work to do, I, we'll be talking about a lot of the work that's yet to come, but I wanted to acknowledge that hard work. So, at the end of June 19, okay, this is this past June we just had, those numbers are still being compiled, it seems like a long time, but audits take some time. You have about $14 million in the general fund. That's unassigned, okay? We're going to still work on those numbers, it could move a little bit, could move, because we're, we're going to be still going through some audit adjustments over the next couple of months. Including transfers from the CFD, because we move monies that are the, the operations, the maintenance dollars, not the dollars that are for infrastructure, the maintenance dollars that come in from the CFD to support city, city functionality. You have about three to five million in each of the last three years of a surplus that was created. This is operating only, so it includes any funds that are necessary for deferred maintenance and other capital replacements. So, I want to be clear that this does not mean that you're meeting all your capital needs with that result. This is what you're, what you've been doing, this is essentially what we've had happening over the last three years. Your wastewater fund has a projected fund balance, unassigned fund balance, cash balance of about seven million at the end of June 30. I want to stop to caution a little bit on getting too excited about that, because we're still trying to see what the operations of the wastewater are going to look like. We're going to be bringing, more than likely, a, a budget adjustment to council in January, a mid-year cycle adjustment. We're still looking, because this year now, we're going to be paying debt service, so that's going to change your numbers a little bit, and we'll, you know, we're going to be looking at that a little bit more closely as we go forward.
One thing that I like to throw in, again, as a word of caution, because you look at those fund balances, and particularly, you look at that three to five million that we've been in the plus at the end of those years. You know, as we were looking at budgeting, we didn't have a solid basis to work from in the years prior. Like I mentioned earlier, we're really only in the second year of really having built off of a identified stable platform. But my concern with that is to what degree we have some one-time things that have happened. For example, in this last year, we, we had the new paramedic squad that we had added, and due to the fires and other things that had CAL FIRE preoccupied, they didn't fill those slots, so they didn't deploy that unit until January or February, until it was fully funded. So, we only had a, about half a year that that service was actually in operation, and so that was about a million dollars, about, well, probably about $800,000 or so of budget expenditures that we didn't expend there. So, that's a big chunk. We've got some building permit fees, if you look at those, that came in much higher than what we had budgeted. But again, you've got to go back and look, we've had some major projects that we've permitted that are a little bit unusual potentially. So, there's some things, and my concern is that we look at this and assume this is going to be a going-forward basis. If you look at our budgets, our budgets are balanced, instead of looking at revenue in, revenue out, and we're trying to be conservative with our revenue estimates. That being said, if this is truly going to be a recurring situation, that's good news for us, because there's a lot of unmet needs that are out there. We know we have some one-time capital issues that have to be addressed. We've got some road projects we want to do, we've got the fire station to build that we know we need to add some more cash to potentially. So, there's a number of things that we have out there that Mr. Mullenkamp will hit in just a little bit. So, I just want to kind of give a word of caution out there, and particularly for anybody who may be watching, to let you know that, you know, we'll be cautiously optimistic, and it doesn't detract from the need of the city to continually evaluate our programs, evaluate the way we do business, to look, to find savings, so we can maximize every dollar that comes in. So, we have more than we thought we had, we still need to be judicious about the deployment of those dollars. So, that, thank you, Jeff, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Thank you. I need, I would just echo that, that city manager's correct, and that too often, I think governmental entities, I've been in government my entire career, wait until things have gone bad to start figuring out what to do. And I think this is, the opportunity we have tonight is a great opportunity to start early on looking and preparation for when difficult times come, because they will come. I mean, it's, it's not a question of if, it's when and it's how bad. But if we don't prepare now, then it will be harder when it does happen. So, so, he's right, we'll be looking at annualizing expenses, those types of things he talked about where expenses come in mid-year, and we'll be looking at, looking at one-time revenues and looking at making some adjustments. I've already been in contact with the management team, and I think we're going to have a great working relationship, I feel really confident that, that we'll be able to share information to distill down a budget that it'd be a little closer. I think the surpluses I've seen between budget and actual, a bit, a little bit higher than I'm comfortable with, I like to see in somewhere in the three, three to four percent range, five percent tops, on a variance from your budget to your actual. And, and so, I'll be looking to try and trim that margin a little bit if we can. Moving forward, just to comment that all other, all other funds are positive at the end of the year, I haven't highlighted those. The general fund is the largest fund that you have discretion on, on what to do with, and then the wastewater is the other really large fund we have. There's a lot of other funds that we have with a lot of money in them, but we don't have much discretion on what we can do with them, it's other people's money in many situations. Moving to page 12, looks like that is a duplicate of page 11, so we're going to go to page 13. No, no, it's, it's okay. It bears repeating. So, all you have here on page 13 is a small graph, it's, it's something I threw together at last minute, but it's just a visual depiction of what I I talked about. Your orange line is your revenues, your green line is your expenditures. The delta is really represented by that gray line. And that shows that each of the last three years, we've added about $5 million, give or take, to the general fund balance. And we started off in a negative. That's just why you're not seeing over $15 million in there. So that just shows you a little bit on the graph. We're going to be doing a lot more graphs as we move forward because we love them. And we'll be giving you more numbers to have fun with. Moving forward then, unless there's questions on the current financial state of the city, because I'm going to be moving on from that. So we're going to talk now, unfortunately, we talked, we hit the positive news, and that really is very positive news that I just provided to you. But the flip side of the coin is that we have challenges ahead. Most of these are probably not going to be a surprise to you, but I think they bear discussing and, in fairness, making some planning for. So we do expect that in future years, and we don't know when it's going to be, but, you know, we think it's not too far on the horizon, when we're going to see operating expenses start, the growth in operating expenses start to outpace the growth in revenues. And so, you know, we've been really enjoying great revenues. Our property taxes have been going up steadily. We've had really strong valuations year over year. Sales tax has been good. We've brought a lot of new businesses in. And so there's really been some good, strong strength growth, and I'm going to be providing more details to you in the next meeting. But we also expect that to start backing off. Even without a recession, we would expect that because we've been pretty hot. And so any prudent budgeting would not contemplate 5%, 6%, 7% year-over-year gains going forward. And this is probably one of the reasons we've been overshooting the mark a little bit. Your capital maintenance needs, I think this is something you know, but I had to let this actually be honest with you before the survey results came in. The roadways and city facilities have not been adequately funded. And this is the similar situation with a lot of cities, by the way. We're not unique in this regard. But we do have the challenge in front of us. You saw that the backlog for just city streets and roadways is somewhere in the neighborhood of $30 million. It's a good chunk. And we have similar situation with facilities. Since I've been here, I've heard of HVAC systems that don't work well. The other day, we had little issues in here. So we need some work to do on these buildings, and I don't know that right now we've been putting enough money in. And I think that's something that everybody understands. Information technology was identified by some people. It never came up on one of our unsatisfactory areas, but there were a number of comments talking about information security. And I came in understanding that we don't really have, you know, a strong disaster recovery setup here and all that. And so there's a number of needs that we have in the IT arena that have been highlighted. I don't know, I think they've been shared with the council, but if not, then they will be, I'm sure. But I have, you know, identified that IT is an area that we can't be too careful with, especially when we're talking about protecting our data on a security basis. And then when we look at making sure we're doing the proper backups and we have the redundancy for disaster recovery, things of that nature. Pension costs is our favorite topic, and I know it's mine. That never works. That never works. Well, it's real. It's real. We have a pension liability, that pension liability will likely grow over the next few years instead of go down because of the actuarial numbers for CalPERS. And it's going to take some time for us to get out of that. And so it's something that I think we can try and avoid, but we're never going to be able to run too far from it because it's real. We had a $15 million liability as of the last fiscal year. The new number will be coming out soon. And so I think this is, there's a number of options available to the city, including doing nothing and just having higher pension costs each year. So that's one of the options. I'm going to talk to you that I believe this is one of the few areas that I think is kind of a win-win for the city. Most of the time, when you have one-time funds, and we'll be talking about that a little bit later, it really addresses a current need, sometimes it's a capital improvement need that lasts for many, many years, and so there's a long-term benefit. But you can't use it for operations. Pensions is kind of one of those where we might have an opportunity to have it affect operations in a positive way for a long time, instead of, in a one-time fashion. We can talk about that more later. There's insurance legal costs. I saw when I was looking at some of the old documents, when they were looking, when they came in and said, you know, some of the risks to the city. And one of them was that we didn't really have a good fund set up to deal with potential insurance or legal issues. The city is, in some part, self-insured, up to a fairly decent dollar amount. And while we've been doing pretty good in the last few years, our claims have been actually fairly good as far as in general liability, there's always a risk. And so the council can consider whether they want to set some money aside for that type of rainy day. When we look forward for operational challenges, our budget really rarely contemplates new positions being added. But we know as the city expands that that will be essential. If you build a new firehouse, you're going to have to staff it. You know, if, as new developments come in, we have to be able to make sure that we can provide the services they need. I've heard the dearth of parks in this area, and then so those are also needs that you will need to staff if you build them. So we think it's important to always look in your long-term future forecasts, and when we get down that path, at the potential for having to add positions and having to add the costs that come with those positions. One of the things I've become aware of since I got here is that we're probably going to very shortly, if we're not already there in some cases, exceed capacity for staffing. I mean, we will probably outgrow the facilities that we're in within the next few years if we're not already there. And so I think it's something to be kind of just aware of, certainly on a going-forward basis, that we may either have to expand or even potentially build new facilities. And that's not even considering the nature of whether the facility is, needs the, you know, maintenance just to keep the doors open, but maybe expansion. The aging infrastructure, while the city's got a lot of new infrastructure, it also has a lot of old infrastructure. And there's a pretty good amount of money that comes in for new infrastructure when we're building things. We can get grants in some cases, and we can get developer impacts. It's a little harder when you're doing replacement. And so this is something that we have to be mindful of and certainly put on our radar. I'm not quite done yet. Sadly, I have another page. But I wanted to be real and make sure that we weren't short-circuiting ourselves. So we have some additional things, and I think they're a little less kind of known or quantifiable threats, but they're real or something that we need to put on our radar and in some cases, maybe even plan for. So affordable housing requirements, I've heard a lot of that since I got here and even before I got here, when I was starting to monitor legislation. It's kind of hard for me to imagine that we're going to get out of this unscathed, that the city's not going to have to absorb some costs that aren't covered by others. So I think it would be prudent for us to put that on our radar. Whether we do anything specifically with it right now or not, it's something that I think would be prudent to discuss and at least consider what we would do, what our options are, and what resources we would have. The impacts of a recession, this is kind of one that I've been dealing with my whole time in government, going back to, you know, managing the state budget in Nevada and all these things, is we do have financial downturns. We're enjoying, I think we're 10 years now, most 10 years into a financial recovery. And it's been pretty strong. After, it was a pretty tepid recovery to begin with, as we all know, it was the jobless recovery and all that. But it's kind of hard to say when we'll expect a recession and how deep it'll be. But I think it would be prudent for us to consider that it's likely within the next two to three years that we're going to see a financial downturn. I don't have any economic data in front of me to support that assertion, other than saying that I've been hearing about claims of a recession three years ago that it was going to be within the next two years. It won't be kicked forever. We have election coming up next year, so I think you can probably start your watch ticking a little bit. The city manager, Todd, I'll ask you to speak to this, the water supply, but I know that that's a concern here, and if you've got any specific comments on that.
Well, you know, as we know, water and wastewater are two critical issues that definitely impact the city's ability to be able to manage growth. And so if we're not in a position to make sure that affordable, adequate supplies are available, then development can't happen. And our community, the success of the community is going to be required upon an appropriate, sustainable amount of growth that's coming in. So, you know, we've talked about having strategies to have positive managed growth for the city, not uncontrolled growth. Our general plan update is contemplating those concepts of quality, well-planned growth. RENA mandates coming forward. You know, one of the mandates I am concerned about is when the RENA concept came about this last cycle, it originally started with the fact that there were going to be fiscal penalties to cities. For us, it would have been withholding our SB1 revenues potentially, which would have cost us $10 million that we're counting on in our CIP for major road projects. And so, you know, those things are terrible. And without a supply of water that we can count on, that can be made available, those projects can't happen, and then you follow along with the potential impact. So that's one way that that could definitely be critical to the city. And so it's one of the things that we talk about at the league, not just us, but the managers. When we have our managers' meetings, we talk about that issue. It's like, hey, we've got a lot of things that are out of our control. But again, anyway, that's a critical issue moving forward. So that's really kind of it.
So that, you know, this is just what we came up with in our spare time. The reality is, you know, I don't want to doom and gloom it because the city's been doing quite well, and the city is poised to do well. But I think we also, as I say, have an opportunity to prepare while times are good for when times get bad. And some of these things are very clearly known. We know our pension costs are going to be there. We know that we've got to maintain our roads, and if we don't, then we're going to have other challenges. So there's some things that I think we can prepare for that are really immediately upon us or will be upon us very soon. And then there's others that, quite honestly, we definitely need to plan for a rainy day. So I'm going to move on and talk a little bit about the capital needs. I'm on page 17 now. And here, we talked about these a little bit, so I'm not going to belabor it too much. But the reality is that, again, Beaumont is in good company with a number of other cities. It's really a statewide and in fact, a nationwide problem, that we do not have enough funds allocated towards maintenance, preventative maintenance, and eliminating deferred maintenance on both our buildings and on our roadways. And that's important not to lose track of that. It's easy to say, you know, I'm going to put off, you know, but if you didn't change the oil on your car, eventually you're going to have a problem. And if you don't rotate your tires, your tires aren't going to last as long. We have some similar situations where if we don't take care of our stuff, it will actually cost us more in the long run because we're not doing it. So I think that you'll have an opportunity to talk to Public Works, and they'll be able to elaborate on this a lot more. It's just, it's, when I talked to Public Works manager, you know, he was talking about that, yeah, he's going to need some money if we're really going to improve the roadways and even keep them where they are, that the allocation will probably have to improve. We have some funds that are coming in. We're fortunate that we have Measure A and that we have the SB1 dollars. But neither of those can be counted on a long term. I was in the council meeting earlier this week where we talked about Measure A is going to go down, and, you know, coming up in a few years. And the next Measure A Part II might not be as advantageous to the city. So we have to be kind of aware and be prudent to plan for that. And maybe, maybe, maybe the council wants to offset some of that, some of those potential losses coming up. So investment in city parks and facilities, similar situation, all of those things are coupled in together. Earlier, we were talking about Rangel Park earlier and the need there, and I've been talking to staff ever since that meeting about, yeah, we have some real needs and glad that we're moving forward with the project. So, but I don't think that's the end of it, you know, the needs that I've heard. Moving on to page 18 then. So assuming that the 14 is the real number at the end of the audit, okay, again, another caveat because we're not done, but assuming it's that or close to that. For a city the size of Beaumont, so the bigger the city, the lower the percentage of your reserve. The smaller the city, the higher they recommend. So for a city of Beaumont, they're recommending somewhere in the neighborhood 20% to 25%. I always, as being a budget guy, being a financial guy, I'm conservative, and I say 25% would be the target that I would shoot for. That leaves you at about $9 million, $9.25 million. That, I would say, don't ever go below that, and you're unassigned unless you are in that situation that demands it, you know, where the recession has hit or you've had other problems that you can't otherwise manage. That would leave about $4.75 million available for the council to make decisions with. That's as of the end of June 30. Keep in mind, that was a number at a point in time. The numbers always move, and you'll see different numbers as we go forward. But we're going to recommend that you consider us bringing recommendations to you, and potentially the council wants to provide feedback to staff on what would be the best options to do with that $4.75 million. And it could be that you recommend, we don't want to touch it. Leave us at where we are. But it could be that you say, I want to deal with pensions, or I want to deal with streets, or, you know, I mean, there's any myriad of things that you could come up with. But $4.75 million won't only go so far. And, yeah, I think you have to be careful to do the things that are the most prudent, in my opinion, for the long run, to at least consider that.
And Jeff, one thing to note is this does not include the $5 million of the payment that you received this year from Waste Management pursuant to your new contract, either, your new 20-year contract. So there is an additional amount of another $5 million of one time that should be reflected in next year's audit as well. And that cash is already here.
And we'll be doing, like, as I mentioned, we'll be doing a budget adjustments. I think it's going to come to your second meeting in January for the general fund. Any adjustments we need to make, we'll be bringing them to you. At that point in time, I'll be able to give you an assessment where we are on fiscal year 20 and kind of how that's tracking as well. So that leads us to what we need or would ask from you, and that is on page 19. And that is to, it's time to consider or deliberate whether the council really has any appetite to look at city services and functions in a deeper way. Obviously, tonight is just, you're getting a snippet of information with the possibility that you might want to either reduce, expand, or modify what we're doing in the city's services and functions. Second is to consider whether, and something we haven't really talked about, but maybe there's some additional services that the council has in mind that the city does not provide, but maybe should. We haven't talked about that, but that's certainly something that could be open for discussion. And then consider whether you want to either make a one-time or maybe long-term commitment to allocations of funds, and that would be in a budgetary allocation on an ongoing basis to either capital maintenance or information technology or dealing with insurance or pension needs. So this is just some ideas, things for discussion to kind of help guide you. And then the last one, if you go to page 20 of the really the three, four major areas, if you will, is to consider whether, in light of what we've talked about today with the threats on the horizon and the challenges in front of us, whether there's any interest in exploring options to increase the revenues or working capital available to support ongoing operations, capital needs. And there's a myriad of options to consider, but there's also a lot of limitations that go with those options. Some would be expanded revenues, potentially some new revenues, inter-agency agreements, and there might be some other ideas that the council has. But I just would caution that we are in really good times right now. It's a good situation that you find yourself in, but that good situation could go the other way, and it could go fairly quickly when it does. When I was managing the mental health system for Nevada, we went through five rounds of budget cuts because it just never stopped. And I'm not saying we're going to go there. I'm saying that it'd be prudent for us to... I'm saying that it'd be prudent for us to at least be mindful that good times won't last forever in your decision-making. And with that, we'll save on that until the next thing will be next steps, but after your deliberation, so. I think I've been talking a long time, so I'm happy to.
We appreciate it. Thank you for the very thorough presentation. It's very, that was enlightening, very nice. Okay, so I'm sure we all have some notes we've written down. So it's a workshop, so we don't have to ask permission and stuff, so just raise your hand and we'll just kind of keep it quorum. So Mr. White?
So back on page 18, just so I understand where we are number-wise. So it says the general fund is expected to be approximately 14 million. When you say that, you mean that that's our, our revenues or that's our operating cost or what, what do you mean by 14 million? And then to take the next step, you're saying that we need to maintain approximately 9.25 million, maintain that as a cost or as a reserves? And then the last one is, leaves approximately 4.75 million available. Is that on top of a minimum expenditure plan that you have and 4.75 is, is money that we can work with? And then the final question to wrap that up, just to get all the numbers straight, the 5 million that Todd brought up, is that is not anywhere in the 14 or the nine and, nine and a quarter or the four and three quarters?
So I'll, yeah, I'll work that in order. So the 14 million, again, is an estimated number. So if the council said they want to take action at the next meeting, I would caution that you have the 10 and a half million and that we still need to figure out where that's going to land, okay? So that, and well, your final audit will be coming into you in January or February. So that's when that extra 4 million really is going to be available. So, but the number of the 14 million, what it represents is at the end, what we expect at the end of this last June was your unassigned fund balance in the general fund, which means dollars the council has discretion on how to spend.
Okay.
And, but, but just to caution that the principles that almost all cities follow is that unassigned fund balance shouldn't be used for ongoing operations. It should be treated as a one-time fund. So you wouldn't want to hire a bunch of new police officers with one-time dollars because that's an ongoing expenditure. With regard to the 9.25, that is exactly, it's a portion of that 14 million. It's the portion that we're suggesting, don't touch that, leave that as a rainy day fund essentially, as a, as a unreserved general fund reserve that's available for when things do go bad and you need to tap in your reserves. And that, then the 4, the 4.75 is just the difference between the two. That's the money we think is available for you to make decisions on and, on a one-time type basis.
Okay.
The 5 million is the money that the initial money we received as a fee on solid waste that was received in this current fiscal year. So that'll be available to the council going forward. This, really, I would recommend you don't do anything with that until we have a better feel for where fiscal year 20 is shaping up, because you don't want to, you wouldn't want to spend those dollars and then find out that you're short in 20. As soon as we feel, get a better feel for 20, then, then there would be a better opportunity for the council to make decisions with regard to those funds.
Okay, so what you're saying is if we maintained exactly what we're at now, that's probably not the right word, but we assume that we are going to be at the end of this year with 14 million plus the 5 million, which means your reserves would probably go up from nine and a quarter million?
Yeah, no, I think, I think that there's probably a very good chance that you will see your general fund reserves added to at the end of 20. It's a little premature for me to make that prognostication, but I, I think you're, you're on target there.
Okay, and then the 4.75 million would be increased also based on having that extra 5 million, not increased by 5 million, but there would be, assuming we didn't do anything with this right now.
Yes, and I would agree with that, but I would count, I would, I would say that you should exercise caution on that 5 million until, at least until we get later into this fiscal year and know where we stand, because you want that money to actually drop to your bottom line first. You want it to become a, you know, a fund balance. At this point in time, we're still in the middle of the fiscal year, and until we see where our revenues are coming in, you may actually need those funds to balance your budget. I don't think you will, but you might. And so we, I would say that those funds are likely to drop to the bottom line and be available, like the 4.75, but it's premature to make that call, yeah.
Okay, and just to get the rest of my notes out, in general, and I understand we're going to get more details at some point, but if you have an idea, do you, do you know what our unfunded liability for pension is right now? Just, just approximately, are we talking a couple million, 20 million, 40 million?
No, I, it's certainly not in the 40 million range. I don't know what it's gone up to. Jennifer, you don't know, do you? We'll, we'll be able to get that for you. I don't know what the number is. It was 15 million. I would expect that it's grown because liabilities are growing over the next few years.
Okay, because I, I know on RCTC, actually it was, yes, RCTC, we were able to pay down our unfunded liability for about seven or eight million, but that ended up saving the commission a million a year in, in interest. And those are the kinds of numbers I'd like to, to know. If you have, if you have an idea now, great, if, if you bring it back, that's fine too.
Well, we'll definitely need to bring this back. Pensions are a fairly good discussion in their own, and I think we could take a good half hour talking about pensions. There, there are a number of options available. As I said, there's, there's a trust we can prepay. And if you do, there's, there's actually targeted prepayments you do. You would look at certain tiers of the debt that you would pay off first because it actually saves the most money. So there's different options and you don't, you're not stuck with one option. There's a few different options to consider.
It just seems to me, when I look at other agencies in other cities, that the ones that are doing well are the ones that have the ability to create a trust fund and start paying down the pension. So that would be where I focus. And then just one last comment, you talked about possible new revenues, and I really think we should, probably not in the next year or two, but consider the annexation, the, the annexation agreement we have as a possible source for revenue going forward. And that's all I have right now.
Go ahead, Mr. Santos.
Just like to follow up, what Councilman, you know, mentioned about the, your on page 18 in here, on the page 18 in here. My question is the, you know, on the 5 million that we had already, are we going to do allocation on that and on, on the, on that amount? I mean, when I say allocation, is it, are we going to put it on the restricted or unrestricted?
You're referring to the 5 million from solid, solid waste?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we've received those funds.
Yes.
So they're, they're on the books and it's part of your general fund balance. It goes to your general fund. So it, it will be available for council action. I'm just, I'm just saying exercising prudence that you wait until we see how the fiscal year is running through. I, I'm, I'm saying maybe four to five months. You could wait until the end of the year, a lot of, unless there's a rush to do something with those funds, because those funds, like the 14 million, ultimately fall down to your bottom, anything, anything that you don't spend, that is revenues that exceed expenditures, is going to fall down as long as it's unrestricted to your bottom line. And so those funds will absolutely be available for council action. It's just, it's just kind of more of a timing.
Yeah. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the, you know, our staff. Looking at this, I mean, I, you know, coming from, you know, three years ago, we're, we're negative, went up to 5.2, now we're 14 million on the positive side. I really congratulate the, the whole, the whole staff and the council in here. And my next question is, is, you know, on this one here, I didn't see the, you know, another fund, which is the transportation operation fund. Are we going to, you know, have that, you know, because that's the two majors that I'm looking at. I mean, the waterways, you know, fund and also the transportation. And that's our major, really, you know, funds on, on, on the, on the city.
Now, are you thinking of the transit fund where we run the bus system or?
Bus system and including the, the grants and all those stuff.
Yeah, we're looking, actually, we've got a meeting in a couple, in a couple of weeks with RCTC. We're going to be meeting with them and the finance team's going to be meeting with them to do a deeper dive into our financial relationship with them. But, but I've had a chance to look at it. We're, we're actually, you know, we're, the way we fund it is we have to make a certain amount of fare box, you know, we have to be able to bring in a certain amount of revenue to support the funds that come in through the, through the county. And so that's kind of a, it's kind of a bit of a zero-sum game. We don't really, we never get ahead and we never really fall much behind. It's kind of, the revenues kind of follow our activities. You know, if we open new, if we open new routes, then we have to increase our fare box to support the routes, and then there's additional funds that can come in from RCTC. I'm not an expert yet. I still got to have that meeting and get a little bit more information. But it's certainly, of the two proprietary funds, which are, you know, the transit and wastewater, it's, it's certainly the smaller of the two, and it, so far has had a little less of my attention, to be honest with you.
I'll, I'll follow up also on, on, on the other side is the CFD, you know, special fund. If you could, you know, probably, you know, I know we do transfer a few million to, to general, general fund. If we do, you know, do some, some, you know, budgeting and everything, that would be nice to see, so we know where those fund coming from, especially on the CFD special fund on that. I'd like to see that.
Well, that would definitely be a clear line item that we'll show you as we go through the budget process. Any monies that are coming in to support general fund operations from CFDs have to be very clearly delineated and they, they go for specific purposes. Most of it is very defined, whether it's for parks or for roadways or for public safety. And so, but we'll be able to define those revenues very clearly that are coming in to support your general fund. And we're working on some other options that actually make it even, even clearer going forward. So, yeah, certainly.
That's good. And yeah, lastly, I'll be quiet. I mean, I will pass on. For now, just my last question is the debt service. You know, if you could see that also incorporated in here, that would be great.
So the debt service is, is a little different animal. Certainly it's going to be part of your audit, and your audit's going to be coming through and that debt service will be delineated more pages than you care to read. And it's, it's fairly clearly identified there. As far as the budget, we really don't budget debt service at all, so it's not going to be part of the budgeting process. But certainly, as a, as a, as the council needs information on what our debt service is and where we are, certainly that information could be brought separately.
Okay. One, one thing to, because I think a lot of people get concerned about debt service. The, the general fund does not have a debt service obligation right now. So there is no city-issued general obligation bond on the general fund. We just sold the 90 million, which was the balance of cash we needed for the wastewater fund. So that comes out of our utility rates. And so what you may see, we've got to look at it, but is, you'll be able to see the movement of funds that come out that go over to the debt service fund to make that payment. And then the balance of our financing is really CFD, and those are those CFD facilities assessments that come in, that the lion's share of them are going to make the debt service that's acquired pursuant to the BFA. The one thing that you do see on the transfers over, which I think one of my objectives has been to be more transparent on the transfer over, but you'll see the administrative assessments that come over that go to cover the financial and management operations that oversee the BFA business. And then, so that, you'll see that element kind of over. And then the other is the public safety assessment and then the maintenance and operations assessments that will document and show the purpose for those funds coming over into the GF.
Very good. Thank you.
Just to piggyback on that, because that was part of my question as well. So there are no funds that are being paid from CFD account to facilities other than debt service, is that correct? All the facilities have been built and been fully paid, correct?
The, the majority of the funds through BFA have gone to reimburse developers for improvements they've already made. And the most recent issuances that we've done have been issued at the, really the tail end of the development. So we've been able to size it, we've been able to set those up without the escalators, you know, all those elements to try to economize on what's being sold. So all the recent funds that we've sold have not been sold and they've not gone into projects. We have had some pay-go dollars where we've used, you know, here and there, a little bit of it, like the streetlight maintenance program that we talked about. You know, those kinds of things, we've had a little bit of deployment of those pay-go dollars. But outside of that, there's really nothing that we have that's going into fund capital projects. There may be some balances of some dollars that you want to put to things. We had hoped to kind of hold back some of those pay-go dollars to be able to address needs within those communities, you know, as they may need things. Like if there's just something that happens that we may need, if there's an upgrade to a park that the neighborhood wants, that maybe we've got some dollars that can go into address some of those things.
And that's the reason I brought it up, because as we look at some of these things that need to be, you know, maintained or improved or so forth, I wanted to talk more about that. Not now, of course, but as we get closer to that. Because people are just going to want to know, well, why don't you use this? And I just want to make sure we clarify that. So that will be coming up in the future. Okay, next.
I agree with you, Paul Hart, that pensions are its own separate discussion, which I really think needs to be discussed, because I think we need to be as smart and address the risks that are to the city that are embedded in that. And, and I also agree that there's a number of agencies that have done a significant pay-down on their pension liabilities. And it's true, they always do seem to be agencies that are overall doing well. That's happened in a lot of the cities too, like Elise Oviedo comes to mind. It's been very good about paying down the liability. And I don't mean that we shouldn't do this. I really think we should discuss it and look at all the options independently. But those cities that have been able to do that too, they haven't come from the recovery point that we're sort of pulling from on this. So, you know, their choices, even though we run the numbers and we should run the numbers and we should look at it, they're also, their culture and their life has been a little bit different and they're at a more stable point in terms of their pavement management and their stability of their businesses. And so, so many of their factors, when they make these decisions, even though numbers are critical, they do have other things that address that. So when we look at that, we too need to keep that in, in mind on that. But one of the things, I guess, when we're talking about the action needed and where we want to potentially put some money, when I look at these things, there are some of these things too that also have another quality to them. Like let's take IT. That happens to be a, a pretty obvious one that seems to be addressed based on the survey and based on the input from, from staff and management. If we put money there, it's more than just the dollars we choose to put there, because when we put the money there, we're also reducing the risk because we don't have adequate disaster recovery. So a dollar is not a dollar when you, in certain areas, not only you're addressing a problem and planning for the future, but you're also managing risk a little bit more, with a little bit more leadership, where, you know, we could put money wherever and then put some money to IT and then if something happens to us, suddenly it's a lot more expensive than we ever planned for. So when I look at things like looking at capital improvement projects and maybe putting a little bit more to things, I think, of course, if we had all the money in the world, all those things would be great, but sometimes there's more risk embedded in some of these choices. And when we look at this in terms of how to parse this, I think we need to make sure that we're also aware that some areas are just more critical to make sure that we don't fall down on, you know, security break-in, disaster recovery, or you could pick another one that had some embedded risks in it. And I just think when we make these decisions, we need to be very aware of that sort of shadow side of it that goes with the choices.
Mr. Larn, do you have questions or clarification on the presentation?
Yeah, the, the graph that you gave us on page 13, where it, it looks like right now, it looks like the graph in the, in the span time that you're using is that revenues are doing fine and actually are outpacing our operating expenses. But in the next page, you, you talk about operating expenses are expected to outpace revenue. Is there any way that we can calculate that timeframe and, and look at that so that we can kind of see where potentially, what fiscal years those revenue and expenditures are going to, are going to cross when we start to hit that turning point?
You know, we can, we can, yeah, I, I think one of the things we definitely need to do is, is prepare a, what we call a long-range financial forecast. do is, is prepare a, what we call a long-range financial forecast. I think you've, you've seen some of these, the city managers prepared some. And I've seen a number of models that actually have been used here in the city and elsewhere. Keep in mind that it's, it's all projections and forecasting is, has whatever value within the next year or two, you can forecast a little bit more precisely than you can in out-years. Typically, cities will do one of two things. Either they'll, they'll factor in a recession that's coming in and they'll guess when that's coming and they'll say, we're gonna drop, revenue's gonna either flatten out or drop by three to five, 10%. Or they'll just take a lower revenue number and kind of flatten that out. And I've seen both ways done, but either way we do it, it's going to be guesswork. I think what we're doing is seeing that, and this is one of the challenges we have, as the city manager mentioned, is we don't have really good, really good numbers here going back a long ways with the city because, because of some of the challenges that were in the past. So we'll probably have to use numbers kind of just generically across the region, if you will. In some of that, if you wanna go out and look, say, back 10 years instead of looking forward, we can, you know, we can look and maybe look at some regional numbers and things like that. But, but at the end of the day, we, what we believe is that this, the numbers that we've been seeing on the revenues have been so strong, if, if the growth continues and the, and the economy doesn't slow down, I, you know, I, I, I don't know when that, that delta would cross. But the reality is, is that we'll do our best to trying to give you our best assessment of when that is. We do know the expenditures are gonna, gonna go up because, you know, that's, there's inflationary pressures and there's MOUs for labor and things of that nature that will drive our expenditure part of the equation. The revenues are always a little bit harder, so.
Well, and if you look at it, for example, the AV for 2019, we just sit down with the HDL. So their rough estimates right now are an 11% increase in assessed value for this next fiscal year. So that sounds great, but, you know, we've got some key retail commercial projects that are just coming onto the books. So when you look down there at the, off of Second Street where all that new commercial happened, where Panera and, you know, all that is down there. And we've got the next phase, the San Gregorio Village, which is coming on with the movie theater, with, you know, all the commercial that's going on over in that area. But then that's gonna kind of cap out until we get to the next tier. So, so we've got a couple of years, we're gonna see some good slugs of AV on the commercial side. If you look at that AV, about 49.5% of it was growth on the residential side. And, you know, the balance of it is conversion of raw land and then it is the commercial, industrial elements that are coming forward. So the year before last, we got a nice bump due to some of the industrial projects that had come on board. You know, so we'll see Amazon ultimately finished out and come on board and then you'll see the commercial that'll happen, there's just come up other commercial projects. I'm just saying that to say that we'll see probably another nice bump for 2020 or 2021, but then we expect it to level off. And it'll primarily be residential. Even with all that, 80% of your AV is still single-family residential.
Right.
And so when you talk about Prop eight and Prop 13, you know, when we look at our fiscal models, we saw with the last recession about a 15% hit to AV. And so we've been factoring that into our thinking, our fiscal modeling, that we say we know. And when you look at those slugs, we get hit hard in that first round based on what we saw last time. Remember, last time, the county decided across the entirety of Riverside County to go ahead and take that action, which they had the right to do, to reduce everybody instead of following the process where individuals could appeal and could request a reduction. So I would anticipate that the county would probably do that again. But it takes five, six or seven years after that to get back up to speed with recapturing your value and then you start to, to move forward from there. So those are the elements that we're looking at and I think that as we continue to look at our numbers, I, I would encourage that we keep that process and keep those elements of the plan that we, we look at. And then when you look at these reserve funds, you know, I kinda ran the numbers, if, because our reserve policy that we talked about was having a baseline of 15%. We never wanna drop below 15% on the general fund or the utility fund reserves unless there's a catastrophic event. And then we wanna be between 15 to 25%, which would be our bridge. So we have a two to three-year down cycle, we have downward pressure, we wanna have programmed drawdowns of those reserves during those periods that we rebuild afterward. And so what we've talked about in the past is, here's what we project as our revenue, here are the funding allowances that we would look at from year to year in order to keep our reserves in the shape that we want them to remain within. Meaning that it stays at that 25%. There are elements in the modeling, depending on what you look at, where you have dollars that go significantly beyond 25%. Those dollars are what you would then wanna program for some of your capital. So, or you wanna put it into your insurance reserve or you wanna put it over into pension trust funds or things like that. So there's some additional cash that should be generated every several point of years that are significant enough to try to move over to do other things with. And so those are the types of things we wanna show you and work with you in the detail as we kind of move forward, so.
Yeah, we'll just tag onto that, that, you know, the next budget workshop we have, one of the things that I will probably hope to get guidance from you on is the assumptions on how we build a budget. And, and part of that is, is really looking for you to give us some guidance as far as, do you want an aggressive, you know, we can try and be aggressive with the revenues and right up to where we think it's gonna be. But then it would be prudent to build in a recession model somewhere in that, you know, and, and that's, that's an approach you can take or you can take a, a lower level approach. So those are some, some questions we'll be coming back to you with.
And I think one of the things too, of our discussion Tuesday, that I have a concern about is the impact of, the impact to services and the cost of additional services when ADUs and junior ADUs start to become a bigger issue, because that's the affordable housing so-called solution that they're talking about. And those are gonna be impacts to services without any increase in, in property taxes, which is a concern. And I, I don't, I don't know how that's gonna fold out or how long it's gonna take to, to start seeing those impacts, but I think maybe permit-wise, we need to start monitoring second unit permits or, or guest house permits or things like that. You, you talk about expanded revenues and new revenues. And can you just explain what you see as the, the difference between the two? Just so I'm clear?
Sure. I, I think, you know, you know, one of the, one of the expanded revenues people look at is, is sales tax, you know, and that would be, you know, driving a, a sales tax increase. That would be an option you could look at. You know, the, new revenue would be trying to find out if you, you know, want to go in with maybe a, a new fee or tax that you can, that you can use. CFD is an example of where we've gone and, and created a, a fee revenue, a fee-based revenue. But you could also look at, at, we could kind of scour if, if the council had an interest in trying to drive the revenues higher to meet, you know, future challenges, we could look at a variety of options to bring to you with the various challenges associated with them, whether, you know, whether it would require, you know, what type of voting would it require, things of that nature. So I, I think we, we would bring to you, if the, if the council has that interest, a number of options for you to discuss.
And one of the elements of expanded revenues to me also is your economic development effort. You know, are we recruiting business in? And part of looking at the delta of where we cross with revenue to expense is, you know, what type and level of development do we need to cover that gap? And then we look back at our market. Do we really plausibly have the market that we can actually recruit that business into? And so that kind of then would give economic development kind of the strategic elements that they need then to begin to look at where to target those types of things. With that, we need to probably look at bringing in some additional support to make those things happen. We need probably consultants, some additional detailed studies, additional staffs, you know, support to do some of those things.
Trade shows.
Correct.
Trade shows.
Right. Yeah. Grants, you know, looking at grant opportunities, those types of things that may be out there. One of the things though, on the revenue side, that we didn't touch on that really wasn't highlighted in here, that I think about is gas tax. Because nationally, several years ago, gas, fuel sales for gasoline actually was leveling out and starting to decline due to fuel economy. So cars were actually using less fuel and gas taxes weren't adjusting. And so it was declining. It was the emergence of transportation and the sale of diesel fuel that filled that gap to keep those gas taxes level. And so as we convert to other types of fuels or other types of energy for vehicles particularly, you know, that could have a significant downward pressure. 2039 is the terminus of the existing measure A. So, you know, 2039, yeah, there may not be another measure A, maybe there is. But for us, percentual settlement agreement with COG, within a couple of years, you know, 60% or so of our measure A funds are gonna start to go to COG, percentual settlement agreement. So we'll see a significant reduction of measure A that'll hit us here in a few years. So that also will be something that we've gotta factor in. So we're trying to maximize those dollars today. The other aspect on the capital side, when we've looked at those sales tax dollars is, we haven't tried to obligate those before we've collected them. So we're trying to collect first, make sure they're in hand before we go out and begin to execute contracts.
My last comment right now, I, I agree with my fellow council members in regards to the pension liabilities and looking to pay that down, but as I understand it too, because there's some jurisdictions that have paid off their liability, but they could still be subject to additional funds if a person's miscalculated, right? So they're, they could come back and take another, have to pay another chunk.
Yeah, so purse goes through and, and they, they do, every, they have a cycle every year that they go through and reassess the liability. And, and some groups, some cities that have actually paid off their site safety fund have turned around and found that a year or two later, they have a new liability.
Right.
And it's a little disconcerting because it, it doesn't seem like I paid it off. Why, why is it back? I, I think it's because of that, that if, if the council decided and wanted to go forward, that I will probably recommend you consider the pension option because it, it, it doesn't expose you to that risk. And, and it allows, there's a number of advantages to it. I, I do agree that, that there are other opportunities that also have, that meet other risk needs and have great payback. Preventative maintenance is never going to be a bad way to spend dollars because you're preventing larger expenditures down the road. So there's a number of things, but if you decide to go down the pension path, I do have a line on some people that are really good to be able to explain it to you and explain what we're up against and options to pay it down.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Okay. So I need to, let's get a little bit of order of what we wanna do. So you're asking.
Could I just follow up on that comment?
Real quickly, because I need to go on here.
I just, even if those agencies had not paid down their pension liability, that wouldn't have, they still would have received the additional liability.
You're exactly correct.
It's just not, it's just, you think you've paid it off and it's gonna come back.
And it's, it's hard, it's hard to swallow. That's the difficulty, but you're, you're correct. It's, it's not like purse is gaming you and they're, they're taking your money and then, you know, it's a real thing.
So not, not paying it doesn't protect you from having to pay more?
No, no. It, it, there's always options to pay it down. And if you have some tiers that are expensive, and this is why I would, if there's a, council has an interest in going that path, I'd bring some experts in at reasonable cost to explain to you your options. And one of them is to see if we have some expensive tiers, because it's always, our liabilities are all set, is set up in a bunch of tiered structures. It's not just one big liability. Some of them are more costly than others. If you can pay off the more costly ones, it might make sense to do so.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So what you're asking us to do, so I've kind of outlined it in three parts. And one, two, for us to consider whether to evaluate, whether to, for city services and functions, whether we wanna reduce, expand, modify, or even add. And then we want to consider allocating resources to certain areas. And then lastly, whether we wanna explore ways of increasing our capital. All right? So we need to discuss each one of those so that they have direction through the workshop.
In the follow-up workshops?
Well, and that's my question for you.
Are we discussing individual functions and services?
All we're looking for today is direction from the council on whether there's an appetite to move down one or more of those paths. And if so, then we're probably gonna recommend to you that we need at least a couple more workshops because there's some work to do.
Right. And then we would need research on a lot of these areas. So let's start with the first one. And do we want the staff, so this is on number 19 of the handout. So it says for us to consider whether to, for city services, functions, the reduction, expansion, modification, or addition. So is there a need and where is that need? Or how do we wanna do this? So come, let's start with this.
So are we talking, I gotta, I gotta understand this, because I, I don't know if I'm being confused. So we're deciding whether or not we wanna have that discussion, we're not deciding to have that discussion tonight.
Right. We're not saying we want this cut or that cut. We're simply saying, do we want maybe public works to be looked at again in more detail or something like that?
But that's what I'm asking, are we gonna go to the level of public works or police, or are we just saying that we want another workshop to go down and start discussing those issues?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
What I, what I had envisioned with that is that we've got these survey results, you know, we've know, we've identified, you know, four or five locations where we need to evaluate level of service. So that's where I would start, you know, do we wanna begin looking at some of those areas? Like we touched about street maintenance, right-of-way maintenance, we looked at economic development, we looked at several elements. And so we'll start looking in those areas and lesser, and I guess the question would be, is there anything else on that list that you want us to think about?
You're not looking for another hour of discussion tonight about those specific areas and things?
The survey's already given you some direction.
Yes.
So to answer your question, yeah, I'm in favor of a workshop where we evaluate those options.
Okay. And so, are you good?
Yeah.
Then, very good. Okay. And as far as looking for the allocation to certain areas such as pension liabilities, IT and so forth, what do we think about that? I mean, I'm in favor. We mentioned some stuff about IT security, the pension thing's a whole nother workshop in itself.
Right.
But I think those are things we have to include. I mean, if we're gonna make a long-term type of plan, we have to have that.
I, I really like your idea of a workshop on just pensions.
Yeah.
And you bring in, you bring in the people that you can give us so we can focus on just that.
I agree.
And you will figure out where that fits on your global, okay.
Jeff also mentioned the value of preventative maintenance and the undercurrent of that of how you save the money in the long term, so, you know. If you'll just make sure you bring out a little detail on that in the next workshop. The only thing that I wondered about is, we, we have, and I'm only gonna share this with him now, I don't think it changes what you were saying about the direction we're going, but I was, I was wondering, we were at such a distraught level before. We have always kept all of our money in a lay fund so that it was as liquid as possible because we basically had none. And, and that was our investment strategy for a long period of time. And I don't know what the trigger is from your perspective of where we should start thinking differently, but if we're close to the trigger or have reached the trigger where we should be thinking, can we earn a little bit more money? I've always been very proud of the decisions and the direction of staff when we tweak things and try to figure out how to squeeze the lemon a little bit more and get a little more juice out of it. So if you'll just give that some thought.
Sure. I'd be happy to. I, I think that there was a period of time where liquidity was a primary concern and I, I don't think that it's as much of a concern as it was. Obviously, we need to be prudent with the liquidity. But we will look at that. I think the Finance and Audit Committee has a, a task to look at the investment policy and I'll make sure that I get on that, look at that, to make sure it's, it's in compliance with the California requirements. And then, and then to be able to, you know, look at options. I, I know that in other cities that I've been associated with, we've, we've done some short-term bonds and things like that, you know, highly rated bonds, and so there are other options that can be looked at to, you know, bring your, your investment income. It doesn't go up really high, I'll be honest with you. If you get 2%, you're like really happy, but, but those are still pretty safe, safe investments, so.
It's, it's very good for us to at least know what it is so we It's, it's very good for us to at least know what it is so we don't look like we're just foolishly not paying attention to it. Thank you.
And of course, when we have these discussions, IT, I would like a full report, kind of where we're at, what we're going to need, you know, kind of an update evaluation. And that goes for, you know, all the other ones as well.
Can I piggyback?
Yes, piggyback.
On, on, on my side is really on the future, really near future is the IT. And if we could really invest on the IT, that would be excellent. So every one of us on, on the, you know, I'm talking private now, I mean, I'm being, used to be a controller on, on the, every department, I want everybody be protected on their data. Now we're talking about the city. We got so much data in the city and I don't want that to lose on, on any one cyber attack. And it's so frequent now, what's going on in the area, and, you know, they're, they're all over the place right now. And one of the biggest ones is, is the, you know, the Imperial County, they got hit. So they're in town, so I'd rather invest now on the IT. Thank you.
Okay, and that brings us to the next one about exploring on options to increase our capital. Do we have direction and comments on there? I for one think if you're going to talk about any type of reduction or changing of any type of service, you should at least entertain the idea of increased capital gain or revenue, I think. I mean, it's just an explore of an option and then we can decide whether it's worth the, you know, time to move on forward. I don't think we should take anything off the table, but that's my opinion. Do we agree to at least listen and entertain?
Well, I think in addition to looking at increasing the capital, I'd like to go back, like Councilmember White said, and look at those annexation agreements to see where we are with those as well, and maybe in that same workshop.
Right, so it, according to this on number, page 20, it's expanded revenue interagency agreements, new revenues, so it comes as a package.
Yeah, okay.
So we're not just one thing.
Sure.
And that includes even the agreements with Riverside County for the fire and all that is.
Yeah, okay.
Any comments? Okay, so on page 21, you asked us to decide on additional workshops. Would you like us to make a date now or do you want to tell us when you think would be the great timeframe and we'll look at our calendars?
I think in December 24th. Six or seven o'clock would be good. Oh, and the 31st, yes.
A late night.
Yeah. Yeah, it'll work, yes, sir.
So I would anticipate if it, because there's a fair amount to take on, that in, in fairness, you're not going to make decisions to do all these things for the next budget cycle. Some of these things are going to be discussions that move forward to maybe a subsequent budget cycle, but, but because there's so much to take on, the next one will be still probably us giving more granular detail on options to you, giving you a little bit more, but allowing you to give us direction to then come back with, with assumptions that you can, that we can move forward on the budget with. So the next one is still a conceptual meeting, but getting more decision, getting more granular, with a third, third meeting being where we actually are asking for definitive decisions that we can use to build the budget. So if I back into the fact that I've got to bring a budget to you probably in April for your initial consideration or thereabouts, April, some April timeframe generally, and then I've got to bring it to your, for final approval in June, I probably need to have the next meeting in maybe either mid-December or certainly by early January.
Well, and, and one step further, departments will need to start putting together their line item submissions in February. So February, March, we have to work with the departments to build their line items, so.
So right now, we are, for December, we have just one council meeting, that's when?
December the 3rd.
So what about the following week? When do our next, would you be ready around the 10th, 11th, 12th, around there?
Or do you want to wait till you get more financial stuff on January?
We have planning commission on December 10th.
What's that?
We have planning commission on December 10th.
That meeting may not be happening, but we don't know until tomorrow.
Oh, okay. So we could do it tentative.
Or the 11th, I mean, we could schedule it for the 11th. I'm just saying that week, because if you wait till the next week, we're too, we're too close to the holidays, yeah.
But it depends on how long it's going to take you to prepare, it's a conceptual idea, so not a lot of numbers, but I'm looking at either maybe the 10th or if you need more time, then push it to around, you know, second, second week of January.
That's where I think we're getting too, too far into December.
Yeah.
The next one's conceptual again as well, right?
Yeah, I think what we'll need to do is, is instead of us, you know, talking about survey results, we'll be distilling down those four or five areas and we'll be bringing you a little bit more definitive. I'll be bringing the comments to you, giving, you know, specifically allowing you and certainly the managers of those departments can be in, involved in that. And I think we would, you'd be looking at, I'm not sure that you're going to want to make any decisions on whether to do anything meaningful with a program or not, but it certainly would be the time we'd be looking for you to start narrowing down, yes, we want to take action or not. With regard to the revenues, what I'd like to do is bring a variety of options to you and to talk to you what the process is. I think certainly within the next couple of weeks, we can do that piece. The pension, I can get working on that, that's going to take a little longer, that'd probably be January before I can get the pensions to you, because, quite honestly, I have to contract them and get them in here. So there's a, I think we can certainly make progress by December, the week of December 9th. And if, if not, would the early part of December 16th be available or is that too late for the council?
You're out of town, you're out of town, right?
17 will be fine.
When do you leave?
On vacation.
You know, the 17th might be good because I think for some of us, we already have that on our calendar as a council meeting.
How about you guys?
What day was that again?
This is 17.
Today's the 17th.
It'll be a regular day for.
Yeah.
What do you think?
Sure, that's fine, do you want to do six o'clock, do you want to do five?
I'd like five, but.
I'm sorry, what day are we picking?
It's the 17th.
Yeah, the 17th.
December 17th.
That was when we were going to have a council meeting, but we canceled, yeah?
Yeah. You're okay with that? I'm okay with five, are you okay with five? Five thirty, six, is it five? Which one?
Yes.
Well, I'm okay with either one.
Five or six.
It depends too.
Oh, okay. How about you? Five? You okay with five, you can get away?
If five works or whatever.
Oh, all right, okay.
All right, how about five o'clock then on December 17th?
Why give anybody a break? Go for five.
We'll have Nicole's world famous enchiladas for you.
So, so the only request I would make is that if there's any information that the council wants in advance of that meeting to make it more fruitful, please let me know.
And, and just one more time then clarify what we're doing so that we know. You are doing, we are looking conceptually at those areas that we talked about with the exception of pension, but we will include possible interagency agreement discussion, expanded revenue discussion, is that true?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's mainly going to be the expanded revenues and new revenues discussion.
Who's the next? Jeff, when are you going to have the budget assumptions to build as a foundation to know what, what assumptions we're going under?
So with regard to like numerical assumptions, like percentage of, of year-over-year change and things of that nature, and whether there's going to be new positions, things of that nature, I think we're looking at probably more in the January timeframe for that type of discussion.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
Yes. Quickly, on, on the budget sub, like the, all the numbers and everything, I've seen the, our budget, what he developed on last time, that's really a good budget, the model on that, I don't know how we, he put it together, but it really, really, you know, shows the, you know, ups and downs in there. Maybe you could, you know, work together on that side? Thank you. Interject on that, there's, there's a five years, seven years up to actually to 15 years budget in there that he, he developed. Thank you.
Any other comments and interjections?
I think you've seen, you've got big shoes to fill.
Okay, I'm going to.
If I can ask.
You're setting the bar pretty high.
One more.
Kiss one more little bitty direction from you. Oh, well, I was going to ask, can, can we get a loan to buy a new quarterback? Or buy a quarterback, I should say. So, no, the question would be, we have a major budget adjustment coming up and part of that is an opportunity to go back and look at the CIP. I know there's a couple of things, smaller projects that we've talked about that aren't in the CIP, like the Grace Street extension. Is that something that you would be interested in, in us bringing a little bit of our reserve funds over to fund some projects like that?
Which, which street extension?
That was the Grace Street South where it's a secondary access.
I'd also like to see the Second Street extension.
Second Street extension, okay.
We better have a discussion then, have some options.
Need more. So we'll look at, we'll look at the dollars we need and plan to have a discussion with you in that January timeframe then?
Right.
Okay, so Second Street and then Grace.
Grace, and if the council has any other ones, they can email you.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, good, all right. I'll adjourn at 7:40.